And good morning. Welcome to the Morning Zone, AM 650 KGAB. Doug Randall filling in for Gary Freeman here. The last two hours of this morning I have in studio with me County Commissioner Emily Hassanauer. And on the phone, I believe I have Stacy Lynn, an investigative reporter from, is it Fort Collins?
She lives-
From Laramie County. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you doing this morning?
Good morning, everybody.
Great, thank you.
We're talking about Plan Cheyenne. I understand this is something you've done some research on. Tell us what you found out.
Well, I've been researching these plans throughout the United States for the past six years. And Plan Cheyenne is very similar to Plan Fort Collins. It is crafted by the same consulting firm, Clarion Associates, from Fort Collins. And so, when I learned that Plan Cheyenne was about to be voted on in Laramie County, I guess I became concerned about what's coming your way. These plans cause a lot of trouble in these communities, and a lot of people suffer because of them. So, I became involved.
Stacy, tell us a little bit about your background, just so people know who you are.
I've been doing independent investigative journalism work for the past six years, focusing largely on local governments and issues that arise in these local communities. I am passionate about the truth, and I focus my presentations and my research articles on facts and evidence. So, I'm not so much opinion-based as I am fact and evidence-based.
What are some of your specific concerns about this plan?
One of the largest things that I've learned about Cheyenne is that the people don't, aren't aware that this plan is being updated with major revisions. It seems there's been a major communication issue between the officials, the consultants, and the people. So, that a lot of changes are coming your way, and there wasn't a lot of awareness about this major update.
What are some of the changes that could be headed our way?
The largest things are transportation and land use issues. Those are major updates in this January 2014 draft. What they're focusing on mostly is redesigning the streets that already exist in Cheyenne, so that there is equal amounts of the road used for walking, biking, and vehicle traffic. And the way they do that, one of their main consultants is from Switzerland. His name is Michael Ronken, and he did a workshop for the city staff. It was a bikeway design workshop in 2010. And he has this wonderful PowerPoint that shows exactly how they're going to redesign the streets that already exist. They're going to make the driving lanes more narrow. They're going to take out the middle turn lanes. Sometimes they'll add bicycle boxes, so that there are no right turns on red allowed anymore. So, that's a major transportation change. They're just going to redesign what already exists.
Now, Emily happened to bring in a copy of the Plan Cheyenne book. This is quite a thick report. I bet a lot of people haven't read it.
And we did ask, we've been asking elected officials and commission board members, committee members, if they've read the entire document. I don't think we've had a single, well, we might have had one person who's read the entire document, and there are a couple other people who are trying to read it before they vote on it. But again, it's almost 500 pages just for the plan. That does not include all of the supplemental studies that have been done. For example, on walking and biking alone, I have 2,033 pages of specific Cheyenne studies that have been done on the walking and biking aspect of Plan Cheyenne. And that doesn't include six of the key documents that were not accessible because the links were broken. And the broken links happen a lot in these plans in different communities for a number of reasons. But I could not access the main, the six main biking and walking plans for Cheyenne.
Stacy, you can-
Do you think that's by design? I'm sorry. Stacy, you can add this county commissioner. He's pored through it last night, up until 1:30 in the morning, trying to get completely through the draft of the, you know, this is what's so deceptive about Plan Cheyenne. They're calling it the Community Plan, and they have a pitcher at the depot with thousands of people at the depot. But you're well aware that they're calling this the People's Plan, that only 75 people decided this back in 2006 and participated in it.
Right. And the important thing is 45 of those people were city and county board members and employees and staff. So, approximately 40 people participated, but that doesn't mean that they participated in the entire plan. That's just the number of people they have their names down from attending one or more of these workshops.
And we have a showdown coming with Tuesday night meeting at 6:00 PM at the City Council. All the people that learned so much through the town hall meetings need to show up at this meeting. It's very important that we show the City Council, the mayor, that there's a lot of public concerns about Plan Cheyenne.
One thing that's interesting, and there is also a Tuesday, March 4th, at 3:30, the County Board of Commissioners vote on Plan Cheyenne as well. But once the people of Cheyenne started to learn that there was a major update in process, we've had a couple of town meetings, and around, more than 100 people for each of those meetings attended. So, there is interest from the community as long, if they're informed that there's a meeting about it. So, there is a lot of opposition to it, and I think that opposition is growing as people learn more of the facts that are in this plan.
250 people total between the two town halls, and we have moved the county meeting, not at 3:30, but 5:30, the 11th. We've moved it up one week on a Tuesday and have an evening meeting on it, so the public can be more involved. And it's this subject only when it comes before the commissioners.
And that was Tuesday, March 11 at 5:30?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And I had my sheet of paper here, and I must have dropped it somewhere. It had all the dates and times, so if somebody out there's got them, I'd appreciate that. But I do believe that's the date, Tuesday night at the City Council. And as a whole, they'll take it up for public comment, and then they get it the next Monday, I believe, the 10th, 6 o'clock. And then the county commissioners get it the 11th at 5:30. I believe them are the correct dates.
Now, some of the comments we've had from listeners here, a lot of people feel that the plan is not conducive to carrying on our Western heritage. Is there any foundation for that?
There is. And if you, if people want to actually look at those two town hall meetings, there's a lot of information packed into there. They can see the full presentation about how the Western heritage has been subverted. There are photos to prove that statement. And they can see the February 8th and the February 22nd town hall meeting at WACC-TV. If you just type that in your search bar, you'll get a YouTube channel come up, and you can see those two town halls. The good thing about the February 22nd video that's online is Mayor Kason and Counselor Williams and the commissioner were all there, and the mayor and the counselor took questions from the audience. So, that's a very informative look at what the people of Cheyenne are thinking about this plan.
The Clarion Association is very much a part of Plan Fort Collins and Plan Cheyenne. I found a news story that documented that in 2010, that they were talking about, Clarion Association was the pick that they were doing down there, and it also tied it with Wyoming. And it said, "The plan is the same plan as Cheyenne." So, if you didn't look at that email, Stacy, I sent it to you last night, so we have started connecting the dots, that these two plans are together. Remember Public Works Meeting, Clarion, and call from Wisconsin? They were talking about, "Track monitoring will be done to see how we are moving in a progressive way." And they were talking about congestion movement of traffic and the MAP-21 funding of this, and the MAP-21 performance and monitoring, make sure that performance is going forward, so we can, we're up against it. It's the people against this, and we're facing $114 million that local government wants and needs to fix their roads. So, that's what the people are up against, is trying to get elected officials not to take this federal money because of the strings attached, and it's tied to MAP-21. That is a barber boxer bill, and Mr. Bach has sponsored that in 2007, I believe. So, that's what we're up against locally.
Looks like we have time for a commercial break here. We'll be back with Stacy Lynn and County Commissioner Emily Hassanauer right after these messages. And good morning. You're back with the Morning Zone on AM 650 KGAB. Doug Randall in studio with County Commissioner Emily Hassanauer and investigative reporter Stacy Lynn. I think we may have lost her call. I'm hoping not. In the meantime, we do have another, oh. Okay, well, if you're on the line, if you're trying to get on the line, just give us a call back. In the meantime, Emily Hassanauer in studio. Of course, Plan Cheyenne, the topic, the-
She can hear us.
Okay, the Cheyenne City Council on, I believe it's Tuesday night, having a public hearing on that issue. Is that right, Emily?
Yeah, it's City Council chambers, expecting a lot of people to turn out that night and show, you know, these elected officials now that's in their hands, and they have a chance to vote on this. I remember the public comments and concerns through all of the town halls. I mean, they want to scrap this Plan Cheyenne. They see how destructive this plan is to Fort Collins. They've witnessed the pitchers and stuff like that. I think some of the city councilmen are wanting to do a lot of amendments to it and how we move forward if we are going to continue this Plan Cheyenne. There's been a lot of talk about perhaps getting rid of the MPO and that department, save the $800,000. He receives $400,000 for five employees. That's just their salaries. There's a lot of studies being done on projects we don't want. There's some constitutional issues with Plan Cheyenne, where we would think that they would want to do a constitutional review between the city or the county attorneys. You know, the people want these elected officials to start listening to some of these concerns. Southside Development voted against it. We've always paid attention to that board. So, you know, they represent the Southside citizens. They've had a lot of issues with South Greeley and Fox Farm Corridor. So, we're hoping that through public comment, we can possibly go a different direction with, with a plan and maybe not have Plan Cheyenne as it exists today.
Okay, I think we have a caller on the line with a question for Stacy Lynn or Emily Hassanauer. Good morning, you're on KGAB.
Yes, good morning. First of all, thanks for your show. Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Stacy. You guys are just godsend to those of us who live in this community. One of my friends sent an email to Sean Allen, who is a city council member, and she explained to him all of the problems that she saw with the UDC code. This is her response. This is what we're up against, people. "In the case of the UDC, for instance, not only have I read it, but I have yet to find that it is anything other than what it purports to be, a unification or streamlining of several codes that our city has been using since at least the 70s, namely our transportation standards and zoning regulations." So, that's his take on that. And I Googled Clarion Associates, and on one of their webpages, they say, "Fostering environmentally conscious practices." Clarion is committed to environmentally conscious business practices through reducing our energy use and waste. We provide incentives for everyone who reduce vehicle use, walk, bus, bike, telecommute, and we continue to explore ways to reduce our travel impacts. So, all of you people out there, if you haven't become involved, how would you like to have to bicycle or walk to get your groceries, to get your prescriptions, to take your kids to school, et cetera? Get on board here, because this is serious stuff, and thank you so much for the time. I love you, Emily, and I love you, Stacy. God bless you.
Thank you, ma'am. And can I address the, what she was saying about the streets and the biking and walking?
Absolutely.
The, what the plan focuses on is called Complete Streets, and that is the terminology for biking, walking, and mass transit, basically taking lanes from regular vehicle driving. And the consultants themselves say in Plan Cheyenne that people in Laramie County prefer to drive private vehicles, they prefer open spaces. But the plan is, has enforced exactly the opposite of that. So, major changes are coming to Cheyenne. It's in the plan. It's not debatable about what their intent is for reducing vehicle traffic. I've been spending some time at the law library at the Wyoming Supreme Court Building, and it's a fabulous place to go to get some ideas about how this can be resolved legally and peacefully. And I love it because Wyoming is so different from Colorado, and I will do all I can to help you protect your unique, truly Western heritage. But in Book 1 of your Wyoming statutes, it starts off with the Magna Carta, then it lists the Declaration of Independence, the United States Constitution, the Wyoming Constitution. And under all of those lawful documents that guide our life in the United States, we have the Wyoming statutes. So, there is a hierarchy that a lot of times local governments don't like to remember are in place. They, a lot of times believe they have authority to basically ignore the United States Constitution and the Wyoming Constitution, and that's what's happening with Unified Development Code and Plan Cheyenne. If people want to look specifically at how to address this legally, in the Wyoming statutes, you can go to Title 15, and that has all to do with Wyoming cities and towns, and you can start to get an idea of how Plan Cheyenne and the UDC are violating the law and the Constitution.
And Stacy, to answer Maureen's question, you know, I think the local government's kind of pushing this thing just a little bit too fast, you know, with the federal performance monitorings and the way it's funded to MAP-21. And the plan has UDC requirements for the long term. I think we should stop and timeout and study this a little bit further and have round-the-table workshops on this before we pass something.
We're back with County Commissioner Emily Hassanauer, investigative reporter Stacy Lynn, right after the news and weather, just ahead. You're on AM 650 KGAB. And good morning, AM 650 KGAB. Doug Randall in for Gary Freeman. I have County Commissioner Emily Hassanauer in studio. We have investigative reporter Stacy Lynn on the phone. The subject this morning is Plan Cheyenne. And I believe we have a caller who's been patiently waiting with a question. Go ahead, caller.
Well, good morning, Stacy. Good morning, gentlemen. Ron Williams here.
Morning, Ron.
Morning, Ron.
Stacy, would it be fair to say that the primary goal behind this Plan Cheyenne is to increase population density, to make the city smaller and more compact while growing the number of people, to turn us more into something like a European model? That's what I see. And secondly, the other question I'd have for you, some friends in Evanston, Wyoming, tell me that the UDC has already been implemented in Evanston. Most of the people don't even know that it's happened. So, is there any way to fight this at the state level, so it can't be sneaked in, the people not knowing it? And I'll get off and listen off air. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
The first, yes, the first aspect of the high-density, compact design that he was referring to is listed throughout Plan Cheyenne as the goal. And the consulting firm, you know, did a survey of Laramie County, and they found that the people in Cheyenne and Laramie County prefer open spaces between them and their neighbors. They don't like to be stacked upon each other in their residences. But the plan has decided that it's best for people to be really close together in their homes and businesses. So, that's the answer to the first question. And actually, the Michael Ronken, the consultant they paid from Switzerland to plan how to redesign Cheyenne, says the reason we have cities in the first place is to minimize travel and to be closer together. So, that's the mindset of Plan Cheyenne and the consultants who have created this entire endeavor. As far as addressing this at the state level, it's interesting he asked that question. I was at the Capitol this week doing some research in Cheyenne, and there was a bill in front of the Senate that had to do with carbon emissions, and they were trying to respectfully ask the EPA to stay out of Wyoming's business. So, hopefully, your state-level legislation can step in and help protect these local communities.
And the $114 million, we can just face it, has green strings attached. And the updates that are being done because of the UDC codes being the enforcer could be a game changer in these regulations for our land use, for our streets, for our transportation, for our pedestrians being forced to ride bicycles and walking paths.
And if we talk about specifics in the plan, people can actually see the plan online. They can go to the city website, or they can just put in their search bar, Plan Cheyenne, and they can go to page 183. And this has to do with property owners, developers, people who want to buy a home in Cheyenne or Laramie County. There's something called a Plan Conformity Checklist, and developers are being told to go through this checklist in a pre-meeting before they even submit their application to the Planning Commission. The checklist for the Plan Conformity is intense. It's vague at times. It's very restrictive. And what that means to the people is that your developers, your construction firms, are no longer free to build what their clients want or can afford. The restrictions are quite severe. But it does say in the plan that there are builders along the Front Range, meaning specifically in Colorado, who are familiar with these restrictions and guidelines. So, at least Cheyenne will be able to come to Colorado and get builders who know how to do this already.
Stacy, I think we have a caller who's been waiting patiently. Good morning, caller. You're on KGAB.
Yeah, thank you for taking my call. I think she just kind of stole a little bit of my thunder, but I, 12 years ago, I came up from Colorado with my own money to build a little, to build a little business up here on some property that my wife and I bought. And recently, I had just thought that I was going to expand a little bit, do a few things differently. So, I went to my planner that took care of me 12 years ago, and he had told me initially when this UDC was being implemented or going to be voted on, that it would be the death of small business. I don't think you have to go to the book to see what the people, what they, what the UDC and the Plan Cheyenne is all about. Drive out and look at the new Jimmy Johns on East Pershing. That's what they want. I asked my planner to run me off some of the code, and frankly, there was about eight pages that I read through it and understood very little of it. So, it's going to be extremely difficult for a, for a small business to do, to do, to do very much growing in the city of Cheyenne. With my understanding that Jimmy Johns nearly pulled out of Cheyenne because of the hoops that they were having to jump through. Now, I don't know that to be a fact, but I, but I heard it from a pretty good source. But I think just drive out there and take a look at the new Jimmy Johns. That's what they, that's what they want. And I'll just let her, just, I'll just hang up and continue to listen to your program. Thank you.
Thanks for the call.
Roger, it's early. 25 businesses that have signed on to stopping Plan Cheyenne. You've got, they have the same concerns that you do. I know there were some at the town hall meeting expressing those views, too. Mom-and-pop businesses to have to grow. I know one car dealership had put in a bicycle rack. Think of the stupidity of that. They're going to ride their bicycle there and trade it in on a car, but it cost this business over $5,000 just to put in a bicycle rack. End this plant. And it took over six months to get the permits to move forward in an addition, and that's holding him up for making sales to his car dealership.
And I can address specifically what the Metropolitan Planning Organization Director, Tom Mason, says about that. He said at a meeting on last Thursday that if a developer wants to do something that is not consistent with the plan, then that developer is going to have to amend the plan before he submits his proposal to the city or county. And if you think about what that means to the businesses and the individual homeowners in Laramie County and Cheyenne, that's quite severe. In this Plan Conformity Checklist, it says that these foundations apply to all residential and commercial projects, proposals, and actions. So, if you do not meet the restrictions in Plan Cheyenne, you're going to have a hard time pleasing your clients. What that does in the end is increases the rates for everyone, for homeowners and for business owners. And so, the question is why? Why are they doing this? And there is a document in these 2,000 pages that answers that question. It's not answered directly in Plan Cheyenne, but the answer to that is why do they have all of these restrictions? Why do they want Cheyenne to become a high-density, compact community? And it's very simple. The more people you have per square mile, the more money it generates for the city and county government. It's very specific to say that the less infrastructure you have, the more people you have in a small space, the more money it means to the local government.
Okay, looks like we do have another caller on the phone. Good morning, caller. You're on AM 650 KGAB.
Yes, good morning. This is Chaplain Ron. Hi, Stacy and Emily. I'm a county private property owner. The MPO has already initialed the Plan Cheyenne for Plan Laramie County. We cannot do stuff that we used to do five and eight and 10 years ago. That is out the window. These people are already in charge. They were voted in, and Emily, you can address this. These, Tom Mason and Clarion has been at this for a long time, '06 or something like that, but they're now changing everything for the county, so as the city grows, the county private owners are going to have to adhere to this plan, and the county private owners had better wake up. It's coming. Stop it now or pay later. Talk to you later.
Thanks, Ron.
Yeah, Chaplain Ron, the planning area boundaries, you know, you're going to see this, what they're going to show you in front of the City Council. They can get a land grab just by saying, "Hey, we decided to take another 2,000 acres and put it in Plan Cheyenne." You're going to see that Tuesday night flash up right in front of you. This is the original map. Now, we've increased it by 2,000 acres. When did the elected officials ever get a vote on that? That's my question. And how come, Stacy, there's so much talk about regional? If I amend anything, I'd like to eliminate the 300, 200 to 300 references that we are regional, and we're all one big, large community here, instead of using the county lines and city lines and properties. Why is that?
The regional focus comes from the federal government, because the federal government, they're supplying so much of the money to do these projects, and it's always good to remember that it's actually local tax money that's coming from the federal level. It goes up to the federal level, comes back to your local community. So, your tax money is being used for these regional designs and regional changes. They have to do it regionally because it makes it easier for them. If they had to address each individual community and preserve each individual aspect of your unique area, there's no way they could do that financially. So, they make it one big cookie-cutter program, and you can drive through any community in Colorado and see the same park benches, the same bicycle racks, the same building designs. And so, it's easier for the federal government to control and to monitor the money that way.
Looks like we have another caller on the line. Good morning, caller. You're on AM 650 KGAB.
Yes, good morning. I have a question in regards, I don't know if this would be pertinent, but what about the variance boards in regards to going in and having a variance board change the plan? Is that still going to be possible, or?
This is Judy Case, one of my favorites, by the way. You know, on the variance plans, that's what I'm asking for. Do a workshop, bring in Don Beard, and he asked the question to the Clarion Association, does the land use, is it done by the developers, or is it done by the landowners, or how is it done? And what was the answer, Stacy, that the MPO gave?
Well, this is fabulous, because Chairman Beard specifically asked if Plan Cheyenne is development-driven, and if it's based on actual landowners and what's happening right now in Laramie County and Cheyenne. He asked Mr. Mason that question, and the answer that Mr. Mason gave was that everything in Plan Cheyenne is based on census modeling and forecasting. So, the plain English answer is that Plan Cheyenne is not based on anything that's actually occurring in Cheyenne or has occurred. It's based on what they think might occur in the future.
And I don't think any of us know what's going to happen in 2020 or 2040. We need to deal right now with the land use documents and use the public and private owners of that land to decide what they want done with it, and quit using these senses and projections and these what-if will happen down the line. You know, I'm convinced that we need to vote no on this, so we can fix it sooner, because if we vote yes, we're still going to have to fix it later.
Well, I guess my very concern is just what I see happening around town, and you have the UDC code in place, and someone does not do it like it says it's supposed to be done. They never went before the variance board to get done what they wanted done, and the city just signs off on it. And I mean, I have this inside knowledge, because I served on a city council for 12 years. What do you do in a situation like that? All it does is cause the people in our community to have to bring lawsuits at a money- at, at a money that the city should be protecting the citizens.
I can address that specifically, what you just said about who makes these decisions. And Plan Cheyenne actually says in this Plan Conformity Checklist for developers and private landowners, that it's decision-makers who are responsible for this. So I wondered, what are decision-makers? Because Plan Cheyenne actually does strip the authority of your local elected officials who are supposed to represent their constituents. So the decision-makers that they're referring to, who have the authority to make these choices for you, include the staff and employees of your city. They, they are not accountable to the people or to the, to the law. So that's where the, the major concern comes in for what's coming your way.
Absolutely, and I will tell you the arrogance of Mr. Tom Mason to say that, you know, Emily or these people that are against this are just trying to rile people up and, and cause them concern. What arrogance for a staff person to say something like that, in a community that is trying to do things how the community wants it done, instead of how the federal government wants it done. I applaud your tenacity, and I hope you prevail.
And, and did you remember your oath to office before you, you know, when you were sworn in? And when we, this stuff comes before us, we're supposed to protect the people that's out there, and according to the Constitution, I think every elected official in the next two weeks needs to re-look at their oath to office.
And that's the, Mr. Mason didn't take an oath of office. He's not accountable to the people, but he is trying to protect what he's been creating and designing for the past few years. And another thing that a lot of times elected officials don't remember is that the, the number one priority of government is to secure our natural rights. Plan Cheyenne and the U D C codes do not ever address the fact that this is obliterating natural rights. The government doesn't give us rights through these plans and policies. Their job is to protect our rights that are naturally ours. So look at it from that big picture. The United States Constitution protects our rights, it doesn't give them to us. This Plan Cheyenne is taking so many individual rights from the community, from Laramie County in Cheyenne, that you have a very large legal problem looming.
I, I totally agree with you. I have seen it, have been in it, and I typically was a politician that always voted with my constituents. Tried my very best, but well, I'll tell you, it was a long, hard road to go up against some of these folks.
And in case you're just joining us, this is AM 650 K G A B. Doug Randall in for Gary Freeman. We have County Commissioner Emily Hassanhour on the phone. We have investigative reporter Stacy Lynn. And Emily, do you wanna stick around for another hour?
Yeah, if you want us here. So we, I love the phone calls, I love this community, and I want their involvement this next week coming up on Plan Cheyenne.
Well, seems to be a topic of great interest, so if you wanna continue, continue for another hour to talk about it. Stacy, are you available for any more time, or?
I, I will invest all I can in your community, that's how much it's important to me. The people there are fabulous, and I wanna protect your way of life. I'll be here.
Okay, we are coming up on a break here just momentarily. Judy, did you have any further comments or questions?
Not at all. I appreciate your program.
Thanks for calling.
Bye-bye.
And again, it's AM 650 K G A B, The Morning Zone. Doug Randall in on your Thursday morning. The topic this morning is Plan Cheyenne. I don't think we have time to take another caller before we go to the break. But Emily, are you asking to have the plan thrown out, or would you rather have it go to a public vote?
I think it's time to have a public vote on this, and it should be done every time something like this comes in. Seventy-five people shouldn't decide this big of an issue. They're not talking just about a, a plan. It's talking about population, it's talking about land use, it's talking about streets, it's talking about a lot of stuff other than just a plan.
Okay, we're coming up on the nine o'clock hour. We'll be back with more discussion of Plan Cheyenne after the top of the hour. Again, you're with The Morning Zone on AM 650 K G A B. Doug Randall in. We have County Commissioner Emily Hassanhour, investigative reporter Stacy Lynn, and we will be taking calls on Plan Cheyenne again coming up next hour. Just in front of nine o'clock, we'll be back with more of The Morning Zone in just moments. Well, thank you very much, Don. We're back with The Morning Zone, AM 650 K G A B. Doug Randall in for Gary Freeman. We have investigative reporter Stacy Lynn on the phone. We're talking about Plan Cheyenne. Also in studio, I have County Commissioner Emily Hassanhour, and I believe we have a caller. Go ahead caller.
Yes, hi, thank you. Must be the day for Judy's. I'm also Judy. I have a question about the condensed, high-density housing. How are they gonna get people to want to live there, since that's not really the way we like to live? And I remember President Obama had said something about wanting to plan communities around residential housing of 300 square foot apartments. And I'm wondering if that's what he's thinking about.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, okay. And I'm wondering if, you know, what are these high-density housing supposed to be like? Who's gonna live there, and what are these apartments gonna be like? A couple of other things that, you know, you were talking about is when you get people compacted in these areas, don't forget that, it's a lot of control. They can control people better when you've got a whole bunch in a small place. The other thing I'd like to, you know, mention, you know, let everybody continue, you know, we just can't forget about some of these things. In Fort Collins, after the grants money ran out, the plan is written so that it must be continued, and at the expense of the city, and they had to come up with $20 million on the backs of their taxpayers. This is just totally unacceptable. The other thing, probably the most important thing that's on my mind right now, is how do we get this on the ballot? If you need people to go out and get signatures, I will volunteer my time, that's for sure, because we just cannot allow these, we need to claim our right. We just cannot allow these people to say, well, you know, you just can't have it now. And I remember something I read on the internet that, or in the newspaper, that the M P O had referred to the people who had gone to the town hall meetings, called us the mob. And you know, it was a very peaceful, very orderly, very professional group of people who were there.
Emily, how do you get something on the ballot?
I believe that the city council and the county commissioners, after they see 200, 300 people come in and speak the will of the people, and, and each person says, we'd like to have a ballot vote on this. And if they don't, it can be done by referendum. That is 20 days to get 15, 10% of the vote, voting population, that is registered voters, and signed on a petition, which we've done before. It's not very much time, it'd be a massive effort to put it. I believe this would be a county issue, cause it's gonna affect everybody in the county, also the city. I'm talking 7,600 signatures in 20 days, if they have to do it through referendum. I'd like to do it by resolution. If this is so popular, we'd ask the mayor to put it on the ballot for a vote.
Stacy, any comment? No, I think we lost the call.
No, no, I'm still here.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and the other thing too, is you know, when I am in the store, I talk to everybody I can about this, and I am just, I'm, I'm just blown away. They don't know it. They don't know anything about Plan Cheyenne, they don't know what's going on, and when I tell them, some of them, just their eyes get big and they look, but you know, I don't see these people at the meetings afterwards, so, you know, we just, I don't know how you put a fire under these people. This is their future. They don't realize what is at stake.
Okay, well, I appreciate the call this morning. Thank you very much.
And thank you, and, and Emily, thank you so much for your information about the ballot. I, I think that's the way we're gonna have to claim our right and, and go. Because we don't seem to be making any headway against these other people. They, they've got their minds made up, and they're not listening to us.
And, and there was a concern citizen wrote in, probably about six or seven constitutional issues he had with it. And I believe it's the county and city attorney's job to, to do a constitutional review and see if there isn't something in Article Six that makes this unconstitutional. And, you know, you were talking about high-density. They're talking about just taking the alleys completely out and making architectural variety and interest, and accessory dwelling units, and clear vehicle circulations. That's taking the vehicles out, so you can't park, or you can't drive down an alley to say deliver to your goods to a mom and pop business. Taking one driveway for four houses. The ideal is to go green, get you out of your vehicles, and I don't know that people in Laramie County understand what's in this huge document, and can take the time, just an average citizen, to go through it and look at all the stuff that's bad in Plan Cheyenne. We can do a plan, we had one for 150 years, that would qualify under the state statutes that we need a plan. We can turn it back over to the city planners and the county planners with their directors behind it. And I believe the people are talking and saying that we can end the M P O and that department and save that $800,000. But we're up against the money. If anybody says this isn't about the money, they're wrong. $114 million, and this isn't getting free money, this is adding to the debt. This is putting an indictment on our children to pay it back. So if they say, if we don't take the money, somebody else will, will? That is code words for big government.
That let, let someone else do it then. But, you know, also too, I was at the last meeting, and I asked Mayor Case, and, you know, I'm 70 years old, I've been a nurse for 50 years, and I've got the feet to prove it. And, you know, walking for me is not the easiest thing in the world. And I asked him, I said, how do I get four bags of groceries home? And he told me, I don't know. And it's like, you've gotta be kidding.
Well ma'am, I appreciate the call this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Bye-bye.
Bye. And I think we have somebody else on the line here. Good morning. That's the call. Again, the, the topic this morning is Plan Cheyenne. We have phone lines open as we speak, it looks like. The phone numbers are 632-6500, 632-3323. Outside the area, you can give us a long-distance call toll-free at 1-888-503-6500. Good morning, you're on K G A B.
Hey, good morning Doug. Good morning Emily. Good morning Stacy. Eric here.
Eric.
Hey Eric.
Hey, answer that lady's question, how do you get people to live in high-density housing? Well, here's what you do. You take those people who live in rundown, high-density housing, and tell them, hey, you're gonna live in something brand-new. And they'll go for it, alright? That's how communities get destroyed. I seen it happen in New York, Bronx, preferably, Brooklyn, Queens. I seen it happen in Newark, New Jersey, the Martin Luther King Project, 16 years, and they had to level it. Twenty-story buildings, alright? I seen, you seen it happen in Chicago, and you see what it does. All these do, ever do is create ghettos, alright? And if people don't understand what a ghetto is, alright? You have to give up freedom, space, and sunshine.
Uh, go ahead Eric, we're listening.
Yeah, I heard some, something in the background, I didn't know I was still on.
I think somebody else is on the other line.
Oh, oh, okay. Anyway, what I was saying is that you don't need ghettos, alright? People need space. You start pushing people crowded in together, and they get on each other's nerves, alright? And a perfect example of that is if you ever got on a subway in New York City at rush hour, you wanna see a bunch of riled-up people, that, I mean, I mean, they, they actually have people at, at major train stations, people actually push people into the subway cars. I don't know if you've ever seen that. At every door, they actually pack in, and if you got a coat tail hanging, they'll even push that in before the doors close.
Makes you glad you live in Cheyenne, doesn't it?
Oh yes, you better believe it.
Hey Eric, I appreciate, go ahead.
Can I just say one other thing?
Sure.
I seen Emily was having a problem with the dates, early today, seemed to have lost his paper. March 4th is on a Tuesday, 6:00 PM, committee of the whole. March 10th is on a Monday, the city, final vote on, on, on the meetings for the public committee, and, and then on March 11th, the county commissioners' meetings will meet at, at 5:00 PM.
And just to clarify, that March 4th meeting is next Tuesday night, for anyone who hasn't checked their calendars, so.
Right, exactly.
And them are the correct dates.
And then March 10th is the final vote on both meetings needed for the public comment. And then on March 11th, which is on a Tuesday, 5:00 PM, is the county commissioners' meeting also.
Hey Eric, I appreciate the call this morning. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We'll talk to you later. And good morning, you're with The Morning Zone on AM 650 K G A B. Looks like we have a caller on the line. Caller, go ahead.
That's me caller?
Yes, that's you.
Okay, well, I'm the third Judy, so I guess we're a trifecta today.
Judy.
Yeah, I'll just make a comment, so Stacy can get back on the line. But one thing I've noticed, as I'm listening to the conversations and reading all the information, is there is a very intended consequence that's going to happen. As we herd people into cities and build stuff, as Eric talked about, and as Emily talked about with money issues and stuff, there will become only a time when the very wealthy can buy land, so that they can be separate from everybody else. And it sounds kinda silly, but if you have money, look at Jackson, you know, Teton County and all that sort of stuff. You can buy three lots and surround yourself with space, and everybody else is living somewhere else. And also, I, I grew up in Boulder, Colorado, so I kinda know whereof I speak with Colorado. But the fact that they're trying to create these perfect streets for walkers, and cars, and bicycles, I don't have a problem with allowing our roads to be multi-use, but the way they're going to do it is just going to keep normal people from being able to do what they want. It real, I think it's really truly gonna cycle into the wealthiest will have what they want, and the rest of us won't. So, it sounds like a full-blown conspiracy theory, but you can see the trends.
Well, it's not conspiracy if you can prove it by facts. In the last three weeks, town hall meetings, everything, we're dealing with what the issues are. We're reading what they have in the books.
Right.
Do you wanna spend this kinda money on studies? Now, does Del Range or another street in that area seem like that's a street we really wanna put a $200,000 study, see if we need raised islands on?
We don't need raised islands. If we need anything, give us a, a walking overpass, like they have over the interstate to have Western Hills connect with its other side. Make it, if they wanna do people-friendly stuff, there's piles of it you can do, but none of it is in the plan.
But a lot of these plans and these out-of-state firms, that's another thing that should be amended. No out-of-state firms.
Sounds like out-of-country firms, too.
Could be. And put a Nut and Bolts plan together, that makes sense. Fix my street. Deal with the drainage. I know Don Beard brought that up. It doesn't even address drainage in this plan of all these pages.
And that's so stupid, at the bottom of Evers Down by Jessup School, that last storm, not the one before this, but when it melted, there's so much water in the streets that the kids go in the street to play in the water. I mean, it's a foot deep, cause there's no drainage there.
Well ma'am, the phones are going crazy here.
Okay, bye-bye, I'll talk to you soon.
Thanks for the call. Good morning caller, you're on The Morning Zone. Hello? It looks like we lost, it looks like we lost the call there. Of course, phones are going crazy this morning as we talk about Plan Cheyenne. We are coming up soon here on our bottom of the hour break, looks like we have another caller. Good morning, you're on K G A B.
Doug, this is Billy, how are you doing?
Good, how are you doing this morning?
Good, good. Hi Emily, hi Stacy. Hey, you know, I interviewed Stacy Lynn and Mike Tuttle last night. They were both at the meeting last week, where no elected officials were there. I have the video, I have both eyewitnesses there. They have Tom Mason, we have a federal administrator there, we have people there that are not elected. And I had Stacy and Mike Tuttle, and they talked about how, wait a second here, we have people here that are not gonna be our, are the people we voted for? And it's scary for me, because if our elected officials do not know what's going on, and we have, it almost seems like we have another government within a government that's trying to rise up. I have the video, I did the interview, I have eyewitnesses. Doug, this stuff's coming down, and we need to wake people up.
Well, I appreciate the call. Looks like we have another caller on the line here. Thanks.
Hey Doug, before, when we go to this break, would people just let Stacy call back in? She's texted me, she's trying to call back in. When we go to the break, if people could just hang up the 3323 number and 6500, we'll try to get Stacy back on.
And good morning, you're on K G A B.
Well, good morning. I had just a little question here for Emily. You know, they're trying to push all these walking paths and all the bicycle paths on the streets for the people. What is the purpose of sidewalks? We have sidewalks in every addition in Cheyenne for people to walk on, and if they insist on putting in bike lanes... on putting in bike lanes and making the streets multi-use, which is what it should be, then we need to go back to what we used to and make all these people that think they need to have these special bike lanes, register their bikes, get a license, and pay for a tag for the bicycle, and help pay for all this painting of the streets that are unnecessary, and move forward. Uh, there's no reason that if they want to have multi-use, that they don't pay for multi-use.
Caller, can I answer that right after this break?
Yeah, please. Thanks for the call.
I'll hang up and wait for you then.
AM 650 KGAB, time now for another news/weather break. We'll be back in just a few minutes with continuing discussion on Plan Cheyenne on AM 650 KGAB. Well, thank you very much, Don, you're on tune with the Morning Zone on AM 650 KGAB. Doug Randall in with County Commissioner Emily Hassanhour, and investigative reporter Stacy Lynn on the phone. Good morning Stacy, are you there?
I am, thank you.
Well, we had a bunch of questions for you, did you catch any of those?
I was not able to hear a single thing for the...
Welcome back Stacy. The question on the table is, why do we have bicycle lanes right in the middle of the street? Why don't they put them back on the sidewalk? And you have public records request on the 300-page study that the MPO has spent on this, you might go into that a little bit.
Right, I have eight separate Wyoming open records access requests filed with Mr. Tom Mason. That has to do with eight different consulting firms who have been paid local money to, um, to study biking and walking. The, um, he has a few more days to fulfill those requests as required by law. But the reason that, um, the consulting firms don't want bicycles on the sidewalk is, um, they've decided that that puts pedestrians at risk.
It was amazing, we had a commercial says, "Which Wyoming have we built?" And if they were talking about riding horses down the side of the street, it might fit in our community. But all these bicycle paths, and this is what the South Side development is against, it's not a nut-and-bolts, fix our street, put a sidewalk in, give us a light for the kids to cross, it's all this other garbage that's put in here and making bicycles share the road with pedestrians. Talk about the hazard of that, what's going on in Fort Collins and what you've seen.
Well, what happens, Fort Collins is the third highest-ranking city for bicycle riding, and daily, we have articles in our local Fort Collins, Colorado, and newspaper that highlights who, who was hit on a bicycle, who was hit as a walker. So even though we have all these dedicated bike lanes and walking paths, it teaches the bikers and the walkers that they have this false sense of security, so they aren't paying as much attention as they should. When you're riding a bike down College Avenue next to a semi, um, if there is an accident, of course, we're human and we're not perfect, we're going to make mistakes in our driving and riding, then the bikes are going to lose every time. A car is much heavier and, so, what, what's happening is that Fort Collins is having a huge trouble with, um, what Plan Fort Collins has done to us. We have no downtown parking anymore, it's very difficult. Just this week, our paper was talking about how we need to have solutions to downtown parking. One of the problems is we've taken out parking spaces for on-street bicycle parking. So even though we have sidewalk bike racks, they have, um, put bike racks in parking spaces. And because of Fort Collins, we're also losing our downtown businesses. You know, downtown Fort Collins is a really cool place to go, but the businesses can't afford to be there anymore because people can't get there to park and shop.
Then we, we had one question about high-density housing, and how are they going to push that on the people here in Laramie County?
The reason, the, the way they're going to do high-density housing in Cheyenne and Laramie County is, um, Plan Cheyenne addresses the, uh, this is more terminology, it's called infill. So anyplace there's an open lot, like, uh, I guess, I guess you call it the hole in downtown Cheyenne, that's going to be, um, an infill project, which means it'll be a high-density, stacked and packed, um, live, work, and play building. So there'll be residences on top, maybe businesses on the bottom, or a combination of that. So infill is going to be a big issue. Anyplace there's a, an old home that might be repairable, but, um, somebody would rather scrape that home and build a, a very large house that doesn't necessarily fit in the, in the community, that's infill. Um, and there are photos, again, um, if you go to WACC-TV, you can see all of this for yourself, how it actually looks. Um, Plan Cheyenne, again, is the ideas and policies and the united, or the Unified Development Code is the enforcement mechanism. And I know before the nine o'clock hour, Commissioner, you were talking about this needs to go to a vote of the people. That would be the most constitutional aspect of adopting or refusing Plan Cheyenne. The problem with a public vote and why it might not be possible is out of these 800 pages of the UDC and Plan Cheyenne, there's no budget or no cost assigned to all of these plans and policies. So if you're going to put it on a ballot, there's going to have to be some way to tell the people how much it will cost, so they know what they're voting for. That's a red flag right there for most people who understand the law.
Emily, is there any way you could get around that, as far as the ballot issue?
Well, that's some of my issues, is these grants. They just come through the county, and we don't even vote on them. We just see them go through earmarked for MPO, uh, projects. We're going to see it go through us, it acts like we're part of it, but we don't get a vote on it. Uh, very strange how it comes from federal government, goes clear to the bottom, so you can almost say this is a bottom way up instead of the top-down. But they know that local governments are hungry for this funding, so they got the carrot on the stick, the hundred and fourteen million dollars, and some of the elected officials, "Well, what are we going to do to replace this hundred and fourteen million dollars?" I'm telling them, we don't need to take it if it's going to sacrifice our liberties and our freedoms and not protect our western heritage and the way of life that we love. Our goldmine is, uh, our western heritage and our outdoor rodeos and what this community is about, and our freedoms and liberties are not worth a hundred and fourteen million dollars for me. But how do we get it on the ballot? I believe the best way to do it is through the mayor, city council, or the county commissioners, just doing it by resolution. I don't know if it's possible doing that, but I know if it is a referendum vote after they pass this, it's going to be a tremendous effort to get that many signatures in twenty days.
Looks like we have a caller on the phone, good morning caller, you're on KGAB.
Good morning Doug, uh, my name's Chris, and I just wanted to comment on the density issue, um, a little bit. I think the road repairs and the bike paths, that's all, um, kind of smoke and mirrors, uh, for the underlying reason that they're pushing this, is that Cheyenne's a prime example of what's been happening here in the West, uh, especially, I've been here in Cheyenne for over forty-some years, and the outer lying in the county, back in the seventies, they started building all these little ranchettes. Well, Cheyenne is, uh, has a ring around it right now, and our city limits are stagnant, we have no place to go. Um, just like, uh, Murray and Company and some of the other developers are saying, "Well, we need to develop Cheyenne." Well, they do, because there's no place for them to go. And so with the density of the city, the only way they can increase revenues is to build apartments and, uh, you know, get the density that they're looking for. Well, one of the ways is to attract people because of the bike paths and, you know, various things to attract people to the apartment-style life, and, uh, congregate them in a, in a certain part of the, uh, of the city. So, I believe that the big push is, uh, like it always is, is money, and the only way to generate money is to develop apartments and things like that, since the city can't grow, or go to the expense of annexing the county, which they haven't been very successful in, in trying to expand the city limits. But, if the city wants to grow, I think they're going to have to look at moving out into the county and, uh, you know, expanding the city limits.
Stacy, any comment on that?
I do, a, a direct comment having to do with, um, those are, those are excellent points, Chris. And the first project that the city of Cheyenne is going to focus on as far as doing high-density housing within the city limits, turns out to be subsidized housing for, um, a specific population, and that's artists. So if the city is trying to increase their, um, revenue, um, doing this project for subsidized housing is going to defeat their purpose right from the beginning, because they're going to have to pay to have this project come in here. And then the people who are going to be occupying that space are already struggling to make ends meet, so the taxpayers are paying for their basic needs and for the housing. And that's where it gets real tricky as far as separating what, what is reality, what's going to happen with this infill and the high-density places, and, um, what the plan is touting, basically.
Right. And, and, you know, I'm aware of that, uh, you know, particular project, but, you know, like I say again, when the city, uh, has no room to grow, it's left to no alternative but to look at solutions, uh, of that nature, so...
And are you aware of the amount of years before Cheyenne has reached its maximum build-out? Do you know what the plan says about that?
I'm not, I'm not real sure what the plan, uh, says about that, but I do know that most of the, most of the lots, uh, because Cheyenne's real heavy, uh, the north side is the important part of the city, um, everything that, um, that they want to build was supposed to be on the north side, but again, because of lack of, of land and, um, some of the people that own the land, um, you know, it's limited on its, on its uses out there and what they're going to put out there, so they've turned to the, you know, to the south side of Cheyenne, and that's currently where they're building, um, are wanting to build lots of apartments and, um, you know, things of that nature, because it's the only area they can do.
I think the plan, and I'd have to verify this exact number, but I think the plan says that Cheyenne, based on current trends right now, has until the year 2040 until it's reached its maximum build-out. Um, so, that's, that's based on what's happening now, there's no way we can predict what the trends are going to be, or if people are going to continue to move to Wyoming. Um, so that's something to keep in mind, and that's, there's quite a ways out for, for build-out in the city.
Emily, any comments?
Yes, uh, Chris, the last caller, caller, please come to the city council meeting and express your views in front of your elected officials. Please everybody remember, March 4th, 6:00 PM, city council's a hole. March 10th, they'll take it back up for a final vote, and then the county commissioners take it up, March 11th, 5:00 PM. Guys, get ahold of your elected officials, email them, call them. The city council's number's 637-6300, county commissioners' number's 633-4260.
Okay, and again, we're with County Commissioner Emily Hassanhour, investigative reporter Stacy Lynn. Just a few more minutes left here yet this morning on the Morning Zone as we talk about Plan Cheyenne. And looks like we have a caller on the phone, good morning, you're on the air.
Morning Emily. Joe wished out of the plumber, but it, Emily, have you noticed the last two times I've been there, when Stacy was there, uh, that, uh, the only person that showed up at the second meeting that spoke out for this was the mayor? All these people that are supposedly for this, I haven't heard them on the radio, I haven't seen them at the meetings, uh, you know, it's kind of strange, and they've been pushing this on us, I've been here forty-three years, and I can remember as far back as Erickson slowly kind of sweeping this stuff in. It doesn't come in all at once, but they've gained great strides in the last few years since, uh, Mayor Kason's, uh, election, and he got elected again, denying all this was any harm to anybody, you know, there's this Agenda 21, uh, Plan Cheyenne is good for us and all this, so, you know, this is the kind of thing we're up against.
Joe, thanks for participating in the town halls and coming out to those meetings, very important. And we don't care about the big roundabout, other than the federal money that was put in it, but we really care about what they're doing to the truck and freight, uh, when it comes to a small roundabout where these trucks can't go through it. The, the total length was something like sixty-seven foot on the one on Fox Farm. Holly Frontier trucks are over a hundred feet long, so is that mobile home place that sells trailers. And the roundabout was only two feet away, the sidewalk was from a, a private property owner. These are the stupid things in Plan Cheyenne, and those are the things that seem to be pushed the most. It is to control truck and freight traffic. That's what we're against when it comes to these Plans Cheyennes. Thank you, Joe.
And another point on that specific, um, topic is that in this, um, one of the consulting firms decided that, that one of the main reasons or problems that Cheyenne has in its commercial areas is that there are roadways designed for vehicles that lead to and from those commercial zones. And if you think about the mindset, what does that actually mean? So, if that's a problem, then how do the consulting firms, um, plan to solve it? And the way they plan to solve it is by something they call access management. Access management means that instead of having a driveway that goes to each business, um, you remove those driveways and consolidate it. So if you have four businesses with four access points, you remove three of those and make one access point. Their purpose in doing that is to make it safer for bicycle riders and walkers, so they don't have to cross multiple driveways, they just have to cross one driveway.
Stacy, my faith is in this community and, and the people that live here. Uh, let's go to these meetings and tell the federal government to keep their green and we'll keep our freedom and liberty. Please everyone, go to these, uh, next few meetings that are coming up and see if we can get this stopped.
There is, there are so many people in Cheyenne who are becoming engaged and involved, and there's so much information that it was giving difficult to keep track of everything, and somebody in Cheyenne has solved that problem, and if you have a pen, if you want to write this down, there is an entire blog spot now related to Plan Cheyenne, and I'll give, I'll spell it for you. So it's P-L-A-N-C-H-E-Y-E-N-N-E dot B-L-O-G-S-P-O-T dot com. That's PlanCheyenneBlogSpot.com. You can go online and see every single meeting, um, every radio program that's been done on Plan Cheyenne, and it's a fabulous resource, it just came up this morning.
And again, thanks to KGAB 650, this is why it's the number-one news station in this area, because they allow the community to call in and talk, and we appreciate that, Doug.
Speaking of which, I believe we have a caller on the phone, good morning, you're on the air.
Good morning to everyone down there.
Morning.
Um, I moved up here from, from Colorado fourteen years ago.
You escaped.
You're dang right. But anyway, I would just urge everyone in Cheyenne and everyone in the county to attend those meetings, because if you don't, they'll cram it down your throat the minute nobody's there. We went through that down in Severance when we lived down there. Um, we had to go through a lawsuit, um, cost us a lot of money, a lot of tears. Don't think that they can't come out in the county and condemn your property, they can.
And I keep telling people, become an army of one, that's informed, come with your opinions to these meetings, and let's, let's do this together.
Because if you don't, I said, they'll run over you. They will literally run over you, and they will just keep after you until you just say, "To hell with it, and we'll give up and move someplace else," and that's what we did. And I'm glad we did, because if you've been down to Severance, and Stacy probably knows what a mess that is, I said, we lived a half a mile south of Severance, out of the town, I was the only one that attended a town meeting. There was, I was the only one, and they wanted to know why I was there.
Yeah, we had...
I said, "Whatever you do in town affects me." And pretty soon, all the developers was whining and dying, the mayors and, and, um, they got big money for their land, and they start running over the little guy.
Yep, and we had 250 at each town hall meeting, it's very important that we don't let this go by in the next three weeks and not participate to our elected officials and let them know how we feel, because in three weeks, it's over with.
I would just beg everyone, for your own, own private property rights and what you believe in, attend those meetings, cram it full, even if you have to get a bigger building.
Okay, looks like we're running short on time. Caller, I appreciate the call this morning. And again, Emily, when are those meetings coming up, for those who are just joining us?
Well, I just put it away, but I think I've given them out plenty of time.
Tuesday night at, Tuesday night at six.
Tuesday night at six, there'll be a showdown in old downtown Cheyenne, uh, you know, it's going to be the public against, uh, uh, government, federal money, and, uh, anybody who wants to get ahold of me is 640-4248. Thanks Stacy for coming on for two hours, appreciate it.
And it does look like we have another caller. Caller, if you can keep it short, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, hey, this is Frank from the South Side.
Hey Frank.
Would you repeat that Blogspot, uh, address, please?
Yes, it's PlanCheyenne dot Blogspot dot com. So PlanCheyenne dot Blogspot dot com, it's a fabulous resource.
Okay, I will post the article I wrote, uh, August nineteen, or 2012, for Liberty's Torch up there, gives people some information on this.
Very good article, and it's talked about Clarion back then, thank you Frank.
Okay, take care.
Thanks for the call Frank. And again, we're speaking about Plan Cheyenne this morning with investigative reporter Stacy Lynn and County Commissioner Emily Hassanhour. Emily, we're running short on time, here any quick, uh, comments for our listeners this morning?
No, this community's worth fighting for, this county commissioner is a servant to the people, and I will try my best to protect us from this federal government funding that has so many strings attached. Thank you. has so many strings attached. Thank you.
And again, that meeting for the Cheyenne City Council Committee of the Holes coming up, uh, Tuesday night at six. That's at City Council Chambers. Emily, when's this come before the commission again?
I believe the eleventh, and we're gonna move it to an evening meeting, five o'clock.
And that's all on Plan Cheyenne. Good morning, you're on the air.
Hi, this is Stacy again. I got disconnected. I wasn't sure if we were finished.
Not quite. Go ahead, if you have a couple of quick thoughts here.
Well, I just wanna encourage all the people in Laramie County and the City of Cheyenne to protect what is yours by speaking up at these meetings that are coming up where you have a chance to speak to your elected officials. The, uh, I've spent a lot of time in Cheyenne over the past few weeks. The way of life that you have right now is precious. It is rare. Um, it, we do not have that in Colorado anymore, where you can walk into your state capital and actually have conversations with the people who are working inside that building, working for you. Um, you truly have a treasure to protect in Cheyenne and Laramie County. Plan Cheyenne and the Unified Development Codes are well on their way to transforming Cheyenne into Fort Collins and Boulder. And you can see in those videos of the town hall meetings exactly what has happened in Fort Collins is on the way to Cheyenne. As much as the consulting firms would like to deny that, we have the evidence in their own writing and in our own photos. So thank you all for fighting. Keep up the fight. Don't get discouraged, even if they vote to pass this. There are remedies in place right now that you can overturn it. So stay strong.
Thanks, Stacy. Emily, any last quick thoughts here?
No, you just listened to a true patriot there. She's coming up here, the kindness of her heart. She's smart as a whip. She knows what she's talking about, because they've faced it in Colorado. Don't let it happen here.
And we could probably go on this for hours more. The way the phones are going, unfortunately, we're out of time for this morning. I'd like to thank my guests, Laramie County Commissioner Emily Hassanhour and investigative reporter Stacy Lynn here on the Morning Zone, AM 650 KGAB. Have a great day.